All right, all set? I'd like to open this Board of Selectment meeting for Tuesday, May 1st, 2018. If you would please rise during the voting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any doubt.
Okay, let's see, there's no further correspondence to deal with, public comments. We have no public here, we have guests. I'd like to introduce Jen Heaton-Jones from, she's the Executive Director of HRA. We're going to hear from her on the agenda in a few minutes. First order of business then is approval, we have a couple of meetings minutes to approve. The first one will be the special meeting minutes from Monday, March 19th, 2018. Entertained motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Any comments, changes?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. And second would be the meeting of Thursday, March 22nd, 2018.
Make motion to approve this submitted.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any comments or changes?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. For selectmen's report, I don't have much to talk about tonight, just want to say for the record, for the folks who are watching this broadcast, and hopefully, we have a special town meeting on Thursday, May 10th. Excuse me, Thursday, May 3rd, 7:00 PM in the GP room, to consider the Board of Finances' recommendation to approve funding to complete the police station project. And then next, we have a budget referendum, which is going to come up one week from that day, Thursday, May 10th. That will be from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and that will be to hopefully approve the town operating budget and the capital budget. So, do you guys have anything to add?
Just, I'd just like to add a few items to tonight's agenda. Under new business, it's just an issue with me, I'd like to maybe perhaps have a discussion on a bi-monthly basis with the building committee members as to reviews as to the progress.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to add that?
I will make a motion to add that.
Okay.
Second.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so I'm going to put...
At five.
Yeah, number, so it'll be new business item number five, discussion concerning public side building commission, right?
Number six would be solar farm ribbon cutting.
Oh, okay.
Make that as a motion.
Okay.
What date or when? Okay. Then, under all business, which we don't have a section here, I'd like to have a couple of issues here brought up. One is charter revision commission, make a motion for that.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. We'll put them on, so we'll just throw them all together.
Okay, put them all together. And then, next one, number two, would be the Bethel Health Department fees and analysis. The next one would be highway equipment, storage.
This is number three?
Yep, right. And then the last one would be consideration of looking at outdated equipment and processing or putting it up for auction, namely at the highway garage.
What was number three? Something about the highway.
Highway department equipment storage. Right. So four items then, right?
One, two, three, four, yes.
Okay, all right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so those will be items one through four under old business, so...
Why don't we move Jen up?
Yeah, one other thing I wanted to add, because you brought up the solar farm, we do have a tentative save, date, date set.
Thursday?
The 25th, May 25th, at 11:00 AM. Did you, did you know about that?
No. Well, I thought it was sooner than that.
It was going to be this Thursday, and there were too many people that couldn't come, including the vendor.
Oh.
So we moved that, and I, and the, and actually, this is, this is a good thing, because Amoresco and Simpaw Partners are basically going to put on a party for it.
I won't be here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What time again?
11:00 AM. So, yeah, I sent out a save the date email to you guys just this morning, so, but anyway, we can discuss it.
On the 25th?
25th, Friday, the 25th, at 11:00 AM. We figured the chances that it's not snowing might be higher, too, considering the way the spring is gone. Okay, so, let's see, new business, the first item on here says consideration and review of Northwest Regional Workforce Agreement. I'm going to, I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we table that for two reasons. One, I didn't want to crowd the agenda with too many long presentations tonight. Number two, we haven't, the town attorney hasn't had time to look at that, that agreement. And as a matter of fact, I'm not 100% sure I gave it to the town attorney yet, so, okay, all right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so, item number two, consideration of municipal solid waste and recycling system agreement with HRA, and I would like to introduce Jen Heaton-Jones, and talk to us about, let's see, the evolution of HRA as it is today, and the functions that it performs for us, and why it's in our best interest to be, to remain a part of this, and to avail ourselves of all services.
Could I just ask, I think I gave someone one of my, a copy that I had, my cheat sheet, can you just look at the front? It had a one pager on taped to the front, no? Maybe Marty has it?
Could be.
Was there a one pager taped to the front, no? Well, those are my cheat sheets.
Oh, is this it?
No, it was a one-page, that's all right. I had some great data points that I was going to review with you. Oh, actually, maybe it, oh, okay, actually I found it. See, keeping everyone on our toes here. All right, so, I thought maybe what I would do is I put together, did not try to overwhelm you, but just a sample of some of the things that we do inside the packet, but this little packet here, this big logo, this is something that I often do for new members and alternates of HRA. It's sort of a briefing, a summary of HRA, the history, it's, my understanding now that I've met Paul, is that he was once a member of HRA, so you must have some understanding of the history and how we were formed out of the state of Connecticut deciding to close and no longer permit our landfills. And so we were formed to come together collaboratively for discount, volume discounting, essentially, for how we were going to dispose of our solid waste. So we came together and we formed HRA, and we've been together since 1986. And the contract that was created way back then is going to expire July, actually June 30th, 2019, and our new contract will come into effect on July 1st, 2019. So we have about a year left. And as a refresher, you know, we are 11 municipalities, we have our member, Matt is the member for the town of Bethel, and Rich is the alternate, so each town does have a member and an alternate. And we do meet on a regular basis throughout the year to discuss the issues of solid waste and recycling throughout the region and the state. Over time, since the authority was created, the state has put into action many state statutes regarding solid waste and recycling. And the most recent was the state's comprehensive material management strategy, which puts forth a lot of responsibility on backs of the municipalities to manage solid waste. And you can go through, there's a page there under the state law provisions of disposal of solid waste, and registering and permitting haulers, and the provisions for your residents to separate recyclables and dispose of them, annual recycling reports to Connecticut DEP, there's tonnage reports that each of your towns are responsible for, information through your town residents have a recycling coordinator, someone that you can go to to answer questions, and then collection reports from the haulers are, have to be collected by your municipalities, then submitted to Connecticut DEP, and so forth. Now, the state of Connecticut, through the CMMs, has created goals, like in the year 2024, each municipality needs to reach a goal of 60% diversion.
60% what?
Diversion of solid waste. So when you look at the pie chart of solid waste, and you look at what it's made of, 90% is recyclable. Right now, most towns are hovering between 20 and 30%, they want every town to be at 60. And so there's stepping stones to get there. And some of those stepping stones are, you need to update your municipal ordinance by December of 2018. The idea behind that is, if you update your ordinance and take a look at, what are you actually doing right now? Is there any enforcement? What are you doing with multifamily housing? How can you educate the public to start to get them into that culture mindset that you were talking about earlier? Other things are, to consider are the separation of organic food waste. It makes up, between 30 and 50% of our solid waste is made up of organic compostable material, when you separate the different types of organics out. And then, the rest of the material is recyclables, glass, plastics, metals. There's a very small percentage of hazardous waste, a very small percentage of e-waste. So it comes down to educating your public and being able to meet that goal, because if you don't, the state says, we're going to put in some mandates, like pay-as-you-throw. You, we are 100% subscription-based in the HRI region. It is nearly impossible, it's not impossible, but it is nearly impossible to enforce unit based pricing on our private haulers. If you had municipal collection, where you were collecting from your tax, through the tax base, much easier to implement, although, as Torrington just recently found out, I don't know if you've read the paper regarding Torrington, wanting to implement a smart program, pay-as-you-throw program through, you purchase, the residents would purchase a bag at the local grocery store. These bags would be $3.75 each. The recycling is free. The idea behind it is, you start to think about what it costs to get rid of your garbage, you're going to recycle more.
Can I interrupt you now?
Yes.
You know, and I want to say probably better than 50% of our MSW is picked up by our local haulers.
Private haulers.
Yeah.
So, so it's very difficult to implement...
Yeah, how are you going to, how are you going to make, enforce that?
Exactly. So, it's very difficult, but that's what the state's saying, you need to put into place, and there are concepts, and there have been, and I have gone to many meetings and conferences regarding how to implement a pay-as-you-throw program with private subscription, it's unit based pricing, you ask your haulers to voluntarily charge their customers three variable rates, the rates have to be extremely differential, so that your small bin at 15 gallons is maybe $20 a month, but if you jump to the 32 gallon, it's $75 a month. And then if you have a 96 gallon toter, maybe you're paying 100 and something dollars a month, so no one's going to want to pay this one, they're going to pay this one, and yes, they're going to try to stuff as much as they can, but it's still only the size.
But their equipment today, you know, it's all automated, you know, pick it up and just dump it in.
Yes. So, there you go, you're putting the backs of this mandate on these poor small business guys, where now they have to modify, either modify their equipment or buy new equipment, they have to buy differential sizes to meet the standard. So, the point is, they want, the state wants you to meet these goals on your own.
By 20, what?
2024.
Okay.
And if you don't meet these goals by the certain date, they're saying, well, these are the things that we're going to mandate to force you to get there, or help you get there. And so, pay-as-you-throw is one idea.
Taxless.
So, where we come in, HRA, so I took the CMS very seriously. There are all sorts of other mandates, like, for instance, every municipality must provide a recycling container wherever there is a garbage can. So wherever there's a garbage can, whether, either it's in your building, municipal building, a school building, or in your municipal parks, if you have a garbage can, you have to have a recycling can. If you can't purchase those recycling cans, remove the garbage can, you will not be out of compliance, that would be my, until you can get the funding, you have to remove that garbage can, or you're out of compliance. So, some of the things that I've been working on, and to help alleviate and move our towns to a higher recycling rate, is looking at those requirements and saying, how can we solve these problems? What can we do about unit based, avoiding unit based pricing? Public education on recycling more, meeting, trying to meet those goals, we go into the school systems, we educate, any member municipality, you have to be a member of HRA, we have a staff member who goes and teaches third grade classrooms, but we teach K through 12, we focus on third grade because that's state curriculum. We go to civic groups, if a church calls, a Boy Scout group calls, we go. I do large events, like I did Edmund Town Hall last month, I will be in Ridgefield this month, actually this weekend, trying to get large audience participation to educate them about, and it's in your pamphlet, the new what's in, what's out campaign, which is a new universal list on recycling.
Let me ask a question, interrupt you here. You know, we were debating for quite a while to go with single stream, this is sort of contrary to single stream now.
Um, yes and no. So, single stream was a positive in the sense that we did increase our tonnage when we went to single stream, it has, it made it easier for our residents. While at the same time, markets have changed, so where, what became almost too easy, and the technology hasn't kept up with the material. So, the evolving package, lightweighting, we have multi-packet material, we now have juice containers that are multi-layered, now we have baby food that's in a container that you suck on, it's not in a glass jar, all of these create obstacles for the industry because it's not just a clean, solid material like glass, or just a number two, one, one plastic, et cetera. It's not just, it's not just aluminum, it's aluminum and paper. Aseptic containers are plastic layers and paper. So, the mixed stream, although it's great in regards to the collection and tonnage of this material, the sorting and processing is, it requires large investments from the material recovery facility. So, Winters Brothers owns the material recovery facility in Shelton, that's where our material goes, and they have pretty good technology, but across the industry, glass is the issue, and we just recently talked about glass. Glass itself is a contaminant, because when it's crushed, as fun as it can be to crush it, the particles attach themselves to paper and cardboard. Now, your paper stream and your cardboard stream, which has high value, has been contaminated. And the broker is going to say, that's not pure paper, it has glass. Glass itself is contaminated by paper when it's wet, it likes to adhere to the glass. So, it has this, it's, it's a difficult material to manage. Once we can remove glass from single stream, this is a concept I'm hoping that we can discuss through the full authority, a pilot program in the state of Connecticut that I've come up with and have support from Senator Kennedy and Senator Miner, to run a pilot to source separate glass, and see if we can find a better way to manage glass from the single stream. And we need to just be willing to change with the times. We were, we got so strong-headed in, in single stream, and that was the solution, maybe we need to admit that it's not perfect. And we need to think about alternatives and move with the time. The China sword is killing us. We went from a $10 tip fee, HRA negotiated a $10 tip fee six years ago, we went to $25 a ton when the markets started to go bad, then we went to $37.50 last fall, we just went to $40 a ton. It's devastating for our small haulers, they're small business people. But at the same time, because we have a discount, volume discount, working together as a region, we're not where city carting is, at $60 a ton.
Who does city carting?
They do south, mostly southeastern Connecticut, Stanford. I'm working with Winters on behalf of our municipalities right now, to work on this pilot concept of removing glass, putting in, in place the, the concept of, okay, I'll get containers for all our transfer stations, I'll negotiate how they'll be picked up at no cost to municipality. How will that affect the ton, the mixed recycling ton?
Would it be, would there be more money, as I was suggesting earlier?
No. So my, my hope is that I can negotiate it so that, if anything, the tip fee will stay, be stable, and it won't go up as others are taking their recycling up, or maybe I can even get it to be reduced, because it increases the value of the mixed stream now, because we've removed a contaminant. So those are the types of things that I'm doing in, in regards to recycling, and how we're moving with, with the industry, the industry's always changing, and the state is constantly changing, and putting these unfortunate mandates on us. So I'm always watching out, I spend a lot of time in Hartford, as well as my, as my office, making sure that I know what's happening on a regular basis regarding these, these issues. Just some, I'll just quickly go through this, and then you can ask me some questions. So this is, if you want to take it home, it has, you know, it talks about our current contracts, it talks about the waste stream, it talks about where the material goes, it talks about our responsibilities, but I'll talk more specifically about Bethel. So, we do, on your behalf, register your, the haulers, there are 15 registered haulers in Bethel, out of the 52 who are registered in our region that I manage. We make sure that they are insured, they carry general liability and auto liability. The town of Bethel is listed as an additional insured on that insurance, in case there is an accident, the town of Bethel is covered, as well as HRA. We investigate all residential complaints on your behalf. If a resident has a concern, they can call us and we can help work, whether it's with you, the Board of Selectmen, or with Matt, we will work to deal with those issues. And an example is in the town of New Milford, Mayor Vass contacted me a few weeks ago, a resident who's complaining about an open-top truck who was spilling recycling out. I contacted that hauler, they were given a warning, if I have to call them back, they will, their registration will be revoked. Now, there are ways that we can, we have some leverage between their registration and their permits. He doesn't want that, he wants to continue his business as he does, his truck has been tarred since, for the last two weeks. So, you know, those are the types of things we handle, the complaints from residents. Hauler education, we have regular hauler meetings, they don't all come, but we have them, we provide information to them, we help them understand what's happening in the market, why is the tip fee going to be higher, what things that they can do to participate with us and be a partner, as, you know, we're not here to put the hammer down on our haulers, we're here to help them do business, we're here to help them be good service providers to your residents, so we work with them. Facilitate and pay for a portion of household hazardous waste, this is a big one. Collaboratively, we work together with the 11 towns to host the hazardous waste events, I facilitate them, HRA pays for a portion of them. So we pay this, some of the setup fees and additional fees that you don't pay, and then you pay per car for only who participates. If you had to do that on your own, it would cost you so much more. We provide municipalities and the material recycling handouts, those are some that are in your packet, like the Wipe-Out Waste Guide, the WeWoo Guide, which is the what's in, what's out guide. We provide, right now I'm doing a series of backyard composting, how are we going to get that organics out if, if people aren't composting in their backyard, and we can help them alleviate some of the myths or the fears around...
Can you elaborate on that a little bit, because we spend a fair amount of money on compost, on recycling, uh...
Organic.
Leaves, organic matter, okay.
So, my focus is on backyard composting, at, the class is backyard composting, we also provide and facilitate helping towns incorporate a food drop-off, food scrap drop-off at your transfer station.
I'm more interested like leaves, leaves and grass.
And we can do leaves, and the state, we're working right now with the state to change permitting, so that if you wanted to incorporate composting at your facility, they would allow it, and you could incorporate food scraps in your leaf, or just do...
So we would have to invest in the equipment for composting?
You could, or there's some great grants available right now through Connecticut DEP, and that's another service that I provide, where I help our municipalities write for those grants, and many of our towns have received a lot of money through the collaboration with HRA to implement some of those programs.
I'm wrong, we spend roughly about, I want to say anywhere from fall to $15,000 a year, to just to get rid of leaves and grass. And, you know, for a while, there was some discussion of we getting into composting business, but it's, it's too complicated for this town to consider, but if we could find a way that we could drop off our leaves and grass at a facility, because I have enough highway trucks here, you know, to drop this off, and you know, I mean, because in the fall, late fall, for instance, we have pickups.
Right, a lot of the towns do.
Yeah, and if we can get rid of this material at a reasonable cost, better than what we're paying right now, I would certainly be interested.
Right, and so that could be, there's a concept right there to say, well, maybe do we need to work together as a region or a town to find an outlet of disposal for, for leaves? Does someone like Ferris Mulch want those leaves?
Well, we have to pay for it.
Well, and, and maybe there's something where we can come together and we can negotiate that on behalf of the town, and it costs you less. Maybe it's not free, but it could be less. So I can, I can see and understand how that, that would be a, an issue that you'd want to address and resolve. So just to keep going, in regards to providing the intermediate processing center, the MRF, and the negotiations for disposal for our haulers on recyclables, the oversight of the regional transfer stations, we have monthly regional recycling task force meetings, where our transfer station operators and our public works directors come on a regular basis, and we talk about issues, what are you dealing with? And it's, it's a great meeting where our transfer station operators are able to talk to each other in one room and say, yeah, I had this issue with oil, motor oil last, last month, yeah, I had this same issue, and my vendor wanted to charge X, yeah, my vendor, okay, so maybe this is a problem, let's talk about motor oil, what's the real, what's the heart of the issue, how do we work together collaboratively, and then we come up with a solution. So, that's something that HRA does on a regular basis every month, it's the first Thursday of every month. Mike Flanagan attends for the town of Bethel, and he's been a great participant for us, and advocate for the town of Bethel through the RRTF. This year in 2018, our hazardous waste vendor contract and our e-waste vendor contract are up for an RFP, so we'll be issuing, HRA will be issuing an RFP for those services. Right now, the town of Bethel receives funding, and it should be in your tonnage report that's in here, one of the pages talks about, let's see, for electronic waste, it's the middle page, and...
E-waste?
E-waste, it's in, in this graph packet. So each town receives some funding, it's not a huge amount of money, as a region, it looks like it's just over $20,000, but it's something, it's better than getting nothing. So we negotiate those contracts. Actually, you'll get a much bigger, fatter check this coming month, because between discussing the contract with the vendor and looking at the old contract, we discovered there was a small discrepancy in what they were reimbursing us, so they owe you money.
That's good.
But, so you'll be getting a check shortly. But that's an example of negotiating contracts on behalf of the town, and using the, the numbers, the volume of material by region to support the town, which hits on the whole volume discount. Let's see, another thing to point out, that waste-to-energy plants are at its highest capacity than they've been in a long time. We had six waste-to-energy plants, now we're down to five. Out of that five, Mid-Con, the one in Hartford, is dying. And the state of Connecticut has issued an RFP, they finally, I believe they've issued the contract to one of the bidders, and they're looking at completely reconstructing the facility, and trying to get it back up and running. Well, in the meantime, you still have capacity at its peak at Bristol, and Lisbon, and Preston, and most of the materials going to Wheeler Brader. Last month, Wheeler Brader, they were, all their, half the burners were shut down. What happened? They turned away all solid waste that was not contracted with them, but guess whose waste went through? Our waste, because we have a contract with them, by contract, they cannot turn us away. So Winters Brothers was able to dispose of that solid waste through our contract. Otherwise, you're looking at spot markets, or you're looking at transporting your material across state or out of state to dispose of, potentially landfilling it, and there's that liability. So, that's something to think about. We talked about the China sword. You know, the other thing to think about is that Bethel doesn't have to pay staff to comply with all of these regulations, and you don't, you don't need a recycling coordinator, we are your recycling coordinator on your behalf. So we meet all of those solid waste mandates that are required of you, for you and the other 11 towns. And a couple of facts, in 2017, Bethel contributed 8.6% of recyclables, that's 854 tons, out of the over 10,000 tons that went through the region. So it's a very small percentage, you don't have a lot of material coming out of Bethel. For MSW, you only 6% of the aggregate of our region, so out of 114,000 tons of material that went to Wheeler Brader last year, your material out of your town was 7,000 tons. That's a good thing, because... That's a good thing, because per, per your population, you have low disposal needs. And yet, at the same time, you don't have enough volume to negotiate anything on your own. You know, the, they're not going to say, oh, yeah, you know, we need that Bethel account. They're, what they're gonna say is, they need the HRA account because we have a hundred and fourteen thousand tons going to Wheeler Brader. We make up about twenty to twenty-four percent of their volume going into that facility. They're in the process of selling their facility.
Wheeler Brader? Wheeler Brader or waste?
Wheeler Brader.
They've, they've changed hands, how many times in the last ten years?
They were waste management.
They used to be part of, I like Signal at one time.
Yeah.
That must have been way before waste management.
That's when I was working for Alex.
So they were waste management, and then waste management to Wheeler Brader, Wheeler Brader to this basically hedge fund company, an investment fund company, who's now looking to flip it and, and sell it. Through that, we, last year, negotiated a new contract with Winters for when June thirtieth ends. We have a new ten-year contract, our tip fee has gone down. We negotiated the tip fee to go to eighty-five dollars a ton, it's now at eighty-seven, forty-seven. Our tip fee for recyclables is now forty dollars, we negotiated to go to twenty-five dollars.
Is this for all towns?
This is for our eleven towns.
Okay, can you repeat that again, for the fees?
Sure, so currently, the MSW tip fee is eighty-seven, forty-seven.
Per ton?
Per ton, for MSW. As of July first, two thousand nineteen, the tip fee goes to eighty-five dollars a ton. For mixed recycling, the current rate is forty dollars a ton. And as of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, it goes to twenty-five dollars a ton. HRA will receive a five-dollar rebate per ton to help us manage the region. We will receive a two-dollar program fee on MSW, again, to manage the region. They will also.
The five-dollar rebate goes to who now?
It goes to us.
To each other.
Okay.
Just to note, the current negotiations around the state, and I'll have a lot of, we, we all talk to each other, you know, Branford calls me and Bristol calls, and then I all might call someone, and we're always talking to each other. What are you getting? What's the current rate? Currently, a lot of municipal contracts are up, and they were getting twenty dollars a ton. They weren't paying any tip fee. They were raking in the money on recyclables. Winters and all of the city carding and those who have material recovery facilities were basically losing their shirt on these contracts with these municipalities that were written five or ten years ago. Now that they're, they're expiring, these towns have a rude awakening, because now, not only are they not getting a rebate, they have a tip fee. So it's complete reverse. With us, we've always been conservative. We've had a tip fee and we've had a conservative rebate, and it's worked to our advantage. We're not going to be in the hole and see this reverse that these other municipalities and regions are seeing. Did you, I'm sorry, did you hear a question or?
No, I'm just moving.
Oh, I, I thought you had, saw your hand. So that's recycling, and the, the other thing that has been, is a great part of the negotiations is that Winters Brothers is giving us an additional twenty-four thousand dollars a year for public education, specifically for public education, to help us combat contamination, to help us educate the public about, don't put plastic film in plastic bags in your single stream, it damages the machinery going into the school systems. All of these printed materials help to be funded through those sponsorships. It's a ten-year contract with a five-year opener. It's, I think that it was.
What do you mean by that?
In five years, we can look at the market. In five years, we can both go, okay, wait a minute, is this working? And see if anything needs to be adjusted. It's not a guarantee that either party is gonna budge, but it's an, it allows the contract to be open to say, do we need to make any adjustments? And it could be good for us, where markets have gotten better and improved and maybe we get more, or it could be markets have worsened and they're hurt and maybe we need to give. So that's.
My question here for, just for Bethel, what's our requirement contractually for MSW tonnage? Because previously, we had a.
You had a put-or-pay, there is none. In the new contract, no put-or-pay. You do not, you are not required to come up with a certain amount of tonnage. It is, you're a partner and hopefully your garbage.
Same thing, same thing with recyclables?
Same thing with recyclables. And here's the thing for your municipality in the, in negotiations, where everyone else is paying forty dollars a ton, and the hauler's gonna pay twenty-five dollars a ton next year, the municipality and any of the material coming out of the Bethel transfer station, it's ten dollars a ton.
Ten dollars a ton, yeah, I was.
So for the material that your residents are bringing to your transfer station, and the municipality gets that bill for disposal, it's ten dollars a ton.
Oh, okay.
So what I did was, in, in those negotiations, we talked about, well, wait a minute, you know, this is on behalf of our municipalities, we need to manage this material, and that was our current fee. We kept, that ten-dollar fee that was from six years ago, we kept it, we just kept holding on to it while they raised it.
That's for MSW?
No, that's for recyclables.
Recyclable, is there anything with MSWs?
No, so it's, it's just the eighty-five dollars a ton.
Okay, well, here, here, help me here, Jen, because I, I was deeply involved, as you can imagine, at one time. I'm thinking about the future, which is this twenty-twenty-four thing. We were contemplating this board right here, as well as we had an ad hoc committee, I'm sure you've met some of the former, the members of that, about going to single stream. To me, right now, I don't think we should even consider single stream. Let's just keep on going the way we were, and perhaps maybe separating up for you with your help to do the glass, and if you want to separate cans, that's fine with me, as long as you, you know, tell it, provide us with a container. That, that can be accomplished here.
Yes, and you're on the right track.
Because the investment for us, and also for Winters Brothers, to bring a compactor in for a single stream, it's useless coming out in a couple of years then.
Right, I agree. And, and actually, the procrastination and the, the desire to move slow is to the benefit of the town of Bethel.
Okay.
Because definitely, I would keep it.
For once, we're right.
You're right, so I.
It's like if you wait long enough, your pie comes back in the fashion.
There you go, right, on my shoes. So I completely agree, and, you know, my, you know, I'm always having to edu, when I'm educating the public, I always have to emphasize that nothing's for free. Recycling isn't free, the disposal of it is not free, the collection of it, the transportation, it's not free, and neither is garbage. But at the same time, when we can partner together and we can create these programs, we can help absorb some of the cost. So coming together, working with Winters, and for some of the other towns, it's not Winters. Town of New Milford, they've contracted with All-American Waste. New Town has Stone, who has Listaco, Bridgewater has Listaco, so it's not all just Winters. It's working with all of them, and whomever has won the contract for the municipality. And, and partnering with them to say, what can we do together? Not to hurt you and your business, and not to hurt the municipality, but what's gonna work best for all of us.
This, this is, the ten dollars a ton for recyclables, it's Bethel delivering it to a Winters Brothers.
Yes, and then, and so you're paying the transportation, but you're only paying ten dollars on the, on the ton.
Okay, because we have another issue ongoing, it's the vehicle that we got, and this thing is, is ancient as my vehicle sometimes. Okay, deliver to Winters, okay. Thank you.
So one of the, I spoke to John Decker, the CEO of Winters, just this morning, we were talking about the issue of glass, and I asked him, would you provide a container to all of my municipalities at no cost for glass? He said yes. He said, what about the transportation? Who's gonna pay for it? I'm not asking my municipalities to pay, because this is for him, as much as it is for us, but it's mostly for him and his ton. Who's gonna pay for the transportation? I can't go to my municipalities and say, oh, now you have another truck that needs to be transporting the glass.
Which we have, right.
Right, so he's gonna, I, he took that into consideration, and I'm going to work out something with him that it's not gonna be an added cost. Because at the end of the day, my point to him is, this is helping your value of your, your mixed ton.
When, when will you know about this?
I'm hoping in the next week.
Okay.
And my hope is.
You can find out through HRA.
Yeah, and my hope is, within the month, we'll implement it regionally. I need to convince every one of my HRA members that this is the right path to take regarding this new issue with the China Sore, the issue with the mixed ton, and, and making better quality material. Is that what we're doing it for? We're not doing it just to have an easy way to dispose of it, we're, we're doing it because we wanna sell it as a commodity and actually make something out of it. If we're just throwing glass away because we were trying to make it easy for our residents, well, then, we're not, we're not doing the right thing. And we're lying to our residents and saying, put it in the blue bin to recycle it, and it's really being sent to landfill. So that's my job, my job is to clarify that and resolve that problem.
Let me ask another question. Since you're buying or seeking all these containers, some of our containers are getting to the endpoint of saying, we need new ones, because you can't weld them anymore. Do you have the ability to wholesale, obtain these things at wholesale?
I've never attempted to, purchased in my capacity of executive director.
Other municipalities are the same problem as we, we have here.
I'm sure it's something that we could work with the town and, and some of the larger haulers to say, you know, someone like Winters or All-American or Listaco and say, hey, do you have any containers? I mean, it's just a conversation, I would say, and they, they have welders on, full-time that deal with building and constructing these things.
Ours are. I was gonna say that unless you can figure out a way to weld something to rust, yeah.
Right. So it's certainly a conversation I'm willing to have.
Would you investigate that for us, please?
I'm absolutely willing to look into something like that for you.
How many containers are we there?
Well, we have two for paper, okay, two for cardboard, I know.
Two, two papers, two cardboard, one mattress?
Yeah, one mattress.
That's provided by the.
And then we've got one for mixed, for the glass and tin cans, okay?
Yeah.
And then there's one big one, which we take care of ourselves, for iron and scrap metal.
Scrap metal.
Yeah. And that's it?
Well, then there's the, well, then there's the trailer.
The e-waste trailer?
Oh, not the e-waste trailer, the, the MSW trailer.
Oh, the MSW.
Oh, yeah, that's.
That's in a pit, and you drive up.
That's our trailer.
Way in, because we're, because we're doing, was it put and pay here, or it's?
Yes, which is a good thing.
Yeah, we, last year, we wiped out the, the fee, so any Bethel resident could use the station for free, they, they paid twenty-five cents a pound to drop off MSW and all the recycling is free.
That makes sense.
Because I, I, I really need, the ones for paper, that has to be replaced, the cardboard one, that has to be replaced.
The bottom's almost gone.
Probably the, the bottle one, that, that's the same vintage, so, you know, we're looking at five right automatically here.
Maybe it's a conversation and a visit with Mike Flanagan, myself, to go and talk with him, and look and see what you have, and then do some outreach and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that's sort of an overview of, you know, you, you have the history, you kinda know what we do, you, you know the state has these mandates, someone's gotta manage them. If, if it wasn't HRA, you need someone in your town hall, a recycling coordinator or staff person who can handle the complaints from your residents and deal with, can I put razor blades in an aluminum can to collect them and then recycle them? Can you answer that question? How, what do I do with my sharps? My parents died this past weekend, and we're cleaning out their house, I have all this hazardous waste, what do I do with it? I live in Florida. I mean, there's, we have questions every day, residents call from all over the region to ask questions, and you need someone who can address that question. We have a lot of angry residents too, who call, who are very angry. Either they're angry at their hauler, they're angry at your transfer station, the transfer station operator, the cost, I got this bill, my garbage man didn't come today.
They call you?
They call us, and even though a lot of those things, I directly can't help them, like, I can't do anything about their hauler not coming that day. But what I can do is make them feel better about it and say like, okay, who's your hauler? Let's call them, let's see if we can get them to come back to your house, or, you know, maybe there's a solution. So we're that buffer when it comes to solid waste and recycling on your behalf. And if we're not going to do it, and, which is basically what, why I'm here, is there's this form of municipal agreement, there's no cost to be a part of HRA to the town of Bethel. It doesn't cost you anything. It's a partnership. We're paid through, as you know, these program fees. And I, I'm lucky, because I love my job, and I think we have a great Board of Selectmen, our full authority, we work great together. I, I would be dumbfounded if any municipality wants to leave our region and not be a part of it because of the benefits. Actually, the town of Southbury is looking to join either another town or Resource Recovery Authority, I was just told that today. I'll be, I'll be reaching out to them tomorrow and say, what, what are you looking at? Why? I know why, because the tip fees are, the average tip fee in the, in the state is over a hundred dollars. We're looking at eighty-five next year. Recycling is forty to sixty dollars, we're looking at twenty-five next year. We have some good contracts.
Just a suggestion, because me and Noel can't miss here, batteries.
Yes.
You know, I, I know, there's sort of a toxic issue. You know, I, I can't find throughout the state, yeah, there's rules about it, but I think, you know, HRA should be considering something like a special container for all of these different types of batteries that are from all these remotes and everything else. I, I, I know people are aware of it, but they don't know what to do, so it goes into the trash.
Okay, so we have, oh, and there's two parts to that. One is, we do have a program for rechargeable batteries, we, we collect them at our hazardous waste event. Any transfer station that's part of our region that wants it, I have given them boxes to collect them at their transfer station.
We have signs?
For rechargeables. We can get signs when towns request them, we, we help work with sign.
Because if we're gonna go with this group, you know, because I, I, I've got a lot of faith in people in, in our town.
They wanna do the right thing. And then in regards to single-use alkaline batteries that do go in the trash, that is the, the normal method of disposal is single-use. They don't have the same high hazardous material as, as a rechargeable battery, they don't have the lead that, that, that rechargeables have. Cheryl Reedy and myself worked for two long years with the state to try to pass a law to recycle all batteries in the state. And we had a stakeholder meeting, we facilitated, at the time, I was the chairman of the Connecticut Product Stewardship Council, we facilitated meetings after meetings with state legislators and the battery industry. We were very close with the model bill, and unfortunately, just between language and the LLC and senators and the battery industry, all of a sudden, it like imploded on itself, and we couldn't get them to come back to the table. It was, it was a large group of us working on it. I haven't given up, there are states that are still working on all battery legislation, the state of Vermont has one. I hope that we can bring it back when things have calmed down. We're working on other things right now. I'm actually hoping to introduce legislation on pesticides and hazardous waste. Our municipalities are, they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars individually or collaboratively like we do on disposal of hazardous waste. We're paying for a material that the manufacturers and the producers should be responsible for the end life of that product, just like mattresses, just like electronics. If you decide that you are going to procure this product and put it on the market and impact our environment, well, you should be responsible for it when it no longer has a life.
Environmentally responsible.
They need to be environmentally responsible for the end life of that product. I wholeheartedly feel that with pesticides and other hazardous waste material. They should take some responsibility for the end life. Packaging is another one that we are currently working on. It's, it is a program that is currently being run in Europe and Canada successfully. It essentially is a very small half penny to a penny fee on every product that you buy at the grocery store, essentially. It goes into a stewardship program, just like paint or mattresses, and those, that stewardship program essentially pays for the disposal cost that we're all paying to our haulers. And they manage it, and it's being done that way in Canada and Europe. Americans don't wanna touch it, it's, it's a dangerous subject to some extent, and it's very welcoming to others.
Matter of fact, in Europe, because I, I lived there for a period of time, they've done away with foam, and they're using like compressed cardboard, so that, that it's recyclable.
Yes, and other compostable material.
And I know, I come from the hospital industry, and since that industry has a lot of stuff, they actually contract out with the manufacturers for them to pick it up and dispose of it.
Because they're responsible.
It's all part of the price of purchasing.
Right, exactly, because it's all part of them being responsible. So in any regards, those are the types of things that I'm working on, batteries was one of them. I wish I had a better answer for you, a solution immediately. But yes, there are, there are programs in the United States for recycling, single-use batteries, and actually, Canada sends their single-use batteries to the United States. and actually, Canada sends their single-use batteries to the United States. There are two processing facilities that recycle single-use batteries in, in the United States, Pennsylvania and Texas. We can pay for that, you know, either municipalities or businesses, HRA, if we wanted to, if we had the funding, to have collection points for single-use batteries and ship them off to be recycled. We could do that if the, if we had the funding.
Some simple thing would be a big sign on top of a plastic barrel, drop your batteries in here.
And maybe next year, when we have more funding, with this new contract. That's the beautiful thing about next year's contract that I'm looking forward to. We have just that enough more cushion in revenue that we'll be able to do greater things than we're doing now. And, you know, it's hard for me to say this, cause it, you know, it is basically me and my, I have a part-time assistant, but we do a lot of great things for our region, and I'm proud of what we're doing on your behalf. So in regards to the form of municipal agreement, it's just basically the contract saying, all of these mandates that are in the state, they're gonna be taken care of by HRA. We agree to be a part of the region, and, which is an attachment to this full agreement of, of the full solid waste and recycling contract with HRA and Winters Brothers Waste Systems.
The, the agreement for the tonnage, is this, this for five years or ten?
It's a ten-year contract.
Okay.
There's no, there's no tonnage requirement.
There's no.
I understand. But these prices are fixed, or are they subject to?
Could it go up annually?
Okay, so the.
The fuel goes up?
Yep, so the contract is, it starts at eighty-five, and they have the ability to increase it only by one dollar. Right now, it's this convoluted formula that includes, you know, half of the CPI and previous tonnage. Now, it's basically, listen, we're gonna start with eighty-five dollars, and after ten years, the tip fee's not gonna be any more than ninety-five dollars a ton, because they can only increase it by a dollar. If they want, they don't have to increase it at all. They could keep it at eighty-five.
So it's a dollar.
But there's no, nothing in there for surcharge because fuel oil is going skyrocket right now.
There is, there's something in there about fuel, but it's very moderate. You know, we were very careful. We understand that that is a cost to doing business for them, but we also negotiated, well, hang on a second, you can't write the language in there, so you can charge anything you want for surcharge. So yes, we did take that into consideration, and there is.
Well, I mean, that's fair. I mean, if fuel goes up, the, he can't.
Right, but it has to meet a certain percentage to what it is when it starts out.
All right, I have two questions. On the paint, do we recycle paint at our transfer stations, or is that through the vendors?
So you can recycle paint, you, you can receive paint to be recycled at your transfer station if you, if you want to be a certified drop-off center. I don't believe the town of Bethel has the proper facility to accept it. You need a cover top, but you have retailers in your town.
Okay, and then, is that transfer station in Newtown, is that closed, or are they still operating over here?
Oh, they are still operating, and they are actually looking at completely renovating their transfer station.
Come in compliance? Or are they in compliance now, or are they?
They are, yes.
Okay. All right, no, I was just curious, because I know there was a big hassle there for a long time.
Um, I don't know about the hassle, but they, they are still up and working, and actually, I will say, the one great thing about Newtown is they have one of the five.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm, I was referring to the one on Hollyville, not, not.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was like, I'm not sure what.
No, I know the one in Newtown. Yeah, no, it's the other one.
That's been closed. That was another thing that you tried to.
That's completely closed now.
We worked hard with the state to make sure that that, that was a legal.
A whole, old Hollyville.
Yes, yes.
Hollyville section of town.
Sorry, I misunderstood you.
Yeah, no, I was, then I realized what we were talking about, yeah.
All right, so do you have any more questions?
No, no, I think I've kinda, I can't get all my thoughts here. Thank you.
Marty, do you have any questions?
No, I just think that I read all, excuse me, I read all our ordinances again regarding waste, the transfer station, they're in really poor shape. They need to be all redone there. It's pretty bad. And that's why I wanted to, you know, if you're looking there, it says that we have all these applications and everything, but we obviously don't have, they have. That's what I was looking for.
You know, this is off topic, but I, I was thinking today, Dan and I were looking at some ordinance related to something else. I think we need to establish a, an ad hoc commission to spend a year or two going through chapter by chapter of code and find stuff that's out of date, cause there, there, there's some things that are way out.
It's not only out of date, I think you should look at ordinances that are never enforced.
Never enforced, they can flip the state law.
Um, if you, Dion, would, if you'd send me, share your email, I will send you the sample recycling ordinance that we had our legal counsel create on behalf of our municipalities, and then what we did is the town's legal counsel, you can look at it and then tweak or change it and make suggestions, so.
Okay. Well, Marty, did you, did you, excuse me, have a chance to review this?
Yeah, I looked at it. The only problem that I have is, she kinda talked about it at the end, is you don't have the main agreement. You like to see what's in the main agreement too, but I'm sure that's probably seventy pages long.
It's about, and it's on our website.
Oh, it is on the website.
It is, it's in the minutes of one of our previous meetings, and I actually should post it as a contract now that it's the full agreement. And if you would like, I can just send you that as a PDF.
Yeah, sure.
All right, what?
Nothing. I, I mean, like, like I said, I looked through it, just, and, and she can correct me if I'm wrong. The one thing that stood out for me is that as long as they have a contract with Winters Brothers, we're, we're committed.
Yes.
Can't get out of it until they no longer have a contract.
How, what is your contract with Winters Brothers? What period of time?
Ten years.
It's a ten, ten-year contract.
It runs concurrent with this.
Okay.
And I, I did have one other question, but I was looking at, well, it just went out of my head. Oh, you, I don't know if it should be addressed to you or Matt, but it, it talks about here whether or not we wanna have arbitration or something else.
Oh, yes.
And I know we discussed that once sometime before. What, what did I discuss with you that didn't make any difference to me? So it ended up being arbitration?
It's in your, it's whatever, you have your.
Yes, it, it's, it's in the, yeah, it's in the draft. We have to pick.
Yeah, but this one doesn't have a pick. This one's only got.
Because you chose, the one, the one that has.
That's what I, that's what I get.
That's right, I passed that on.
That's what I wanted.
You already passed it on to me.
It's arbitration.
Yes, and it's not too late to change that, I think, but.
No, I think, no, I think we're good on that. So for Rich and Paul, do you wish to approve this subject to town attorney reviewing the master agreement? Or you wanna table this till the next one?
I'd like to read, read all of this.
You wanna read it? Okay.
I'll table till the next week.
All right, so if I, if I could have Dion make a note to put this on, what would that be?
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth, meeting of May fifteenth.
Okay, table or what do you have there?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll put a motion on the floor to table and, to put it for a date certain, May fifteenth, for review. You a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Dion.
You're welcome, I'm sorry, it's a wait.
No, it's okay.
Thank you, you're very, very informative.
You're welcome.
Paul keeps asking questions about it all the time, so it's great, but don't be a stranger.
I said, I said on that ad hoc committee.
My card's in there, so call or email me anytime.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, moving on to item number three. This is a pass-through from the, from the PUC. Basically, what we need is a resolution from this board that lets our contractor walk onto deep property and tap in a pipe to test the water. It's, it's that simple, but we have to go through this procedure. So I'll put a motion on the floor that says, resolve that Matthew Nickerbocker of the town of Bethel is hereby authorized to execute and enter into, on behalf of the town of Bethel, a special use license with the state of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to install, operate, and remove groundwater monitoring wells on a portion of deep property known as the East Swamp Wildlife Management Area. Okay, any discussion?
No, second.
All right, it's been a second, a second time. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries. It's amazing what we have to go through. Consideration, number four, consideration of water rules and regulations fee schedule. And I would like to ask you, so, so basically, at the last Public Utilities Commission meeting, we received a fee schedule. Before we could put that into place, we have to have a public hearing.
Right.
Our choice is, if we wanted to just make this easy and put this with a board of selectmen meeting, would be either May fifteenth or June fifth.
Let's do it May fifteenth.
May fifteenth, and, and a public hearing notice is what, ten days?
Ten days.
Okay.
Ten days.
Dion, does that give you time to?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, first.
Okay, so I will put a motion on the floor that we establish a public hearing date to, for, to hear public comments on the water rules and regulations fee schedule for Tuesday, May fifteenth, let's say, six thirty, then we have a regular meeting at seven?
Right, okay.
Six thirty PM, meeting will remain at the municipal center. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Okay, new item, number five, discussion of Public Site and Building Commission. Paul, that was your item.
Yeah. The reason why I brought this up is, you know, I hate to say this, the, the police station, you know, it was a surprise to us here especially. And I just, you know, a lot of people have called me, and I'm sure they've called Rich too, and I'm sure they called you, Matt. What's going on? How come you're not aware of it? And, you know, we've got some, we have some major construction going forward. And I know the Public Site and Building Committees, perhaps on the beginning of the project, they may meet every other week, maybe sometimes even weekly. I don't want to delve into their time too much, because too many meetings, you know, it'll burn you out. But at the same time, I think for us being informed, I'd like to see on all future major projects, that at least once every two months, we get a review from the Public Site and Building Committee. I really feel that, you know, I was just left hanging in the air on this thing. And we, we were suspect all along, but being suspect, it's, it's not good. We, we need facts. I want to avoid this again completely. I know that the Board of Education's already has a construction management team, which hopefully avoid, but at the same time, I think we just have to be abreast of this whole thing as we're going with major projects. So I would just like to just say, as we go forward, we, we need reviews here at Selectmen.
I'm, I'm gonna make a suggestion that for the remainder of the police station project, we make it look a month.
Okay.
Cause we're.
I agree.
Cause it, you know.
There's too much, too much on, on issue here with, with the public.
All right. Okay, so you wanna do this formally, put a motion on the floor?
I'll make that motion that, for the, the Police Department Building, that we meet monthly with the Public Site and Building Committee to get an appraisal of what is occurring.
Well, do you want to, just, oh, I'm sorry.
I was, I was gonna ask the same question. Do you wanna, wanna have a joint meeting or have a chairman?
I, I don't, you don't need all, because then they're having three, four meetings a month.
Yeah, at least the chairman.
Chairman or a subcommittee chairman or somebody.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my same thought.
Okay, all right, so what's, what's per month, let's say, the first, first meeting of the month?
Right.
We'll, we'll have the, the chair and, you know what, they just formed a subcommittee.
I know.
Of three people, why don't we have the subcommittee?
Leave that up to the committee.
Okay, all right, yeah, or the chair or the committee, all right, so we'll, yeah, we'll leave it up to them. Okay, did you second that, Rich?
Yes.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
Okay.
And then Solar Farm was not, that number six, but.
Do you want me to request that the first of the month?
Yeah.
Okay.
First meeting of the month.
First, yeah.
Rich, if you can do me a favor, let me know when you're, when you're available, when you're not available, cause you suffered through the Solar Farm for seven and a half years, so I wanna see if we can change that date.
All right, well, yeah, I'm, I'm going the nineteenth through the next Monday. The nineteenth through the next Monday, so I'm gonna miss the parade also.
Nineteenth through the twenty-first.
Nineteenth to twenty-first, okay.
Wait, wait, wait. What's on the twenty-fifth?
The nineteenth through the following week is twenty-sixth.
The twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth, yeah, the following week.
Okay, I'm sorry. You said the following Monday, I just thought you meant the next Monday.
Oh, no, no, a week ago, we're more than three weeks.
Okay, so that would be the twenty-eighth.
All right, all right, well, we'll.
Well, if you can, if not, that's understandable.
Well, we'll, we'll do our best, cause.
Okay, I, I would appreciate that, but.
Yeah, but you put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into it too, so, all right, so we'll do, did you have anything else on the Solar Farm?
Uh, no, as long as we have a date, and you said, it's at eleven AM on, on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, subject to review, but I'll check, we'll check with everybody, cause we don't want anybody to be excluded after all this time.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, last time, you, you sent all the guys who were in that commission.
Yeah.
Be great.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I sent that out to Bill Crady to, to get all his current and former members out for that too.
Can I, can I make a comment? I feel I'm sorry. I hardly ever use the book anymore, I'm always on the computer. But I wanted to look up for the Public Site and Building Commission, because I remember reading it the other day. And there's a provision in here already that they're supposed to, it says here, under twenty dash four duties, see construction phase, sisterly construction phase in each project. The commission shall provide, at a minimum, one written order report to the Board of Selectmen regarding this status and progress of the project. And I, I have to tell you, in all honesty, probably if you asked anybody that's involved in government, when was the last time they read the Public Site and Building Commission, you'd probably get half the people saying they've never even read it.
Yeah. All right, thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to all business then. Number one, charter revision. And I think, as I said, Mr. Kelly, who may he rest in peace, passed away, and there was, we just received an email today or yesterday about, I think, John Lennon.
John Lennon, right.
To replay, and I, I believe the Democratic Vacancy Committee just with, over the weekend, obtained enough volunteers, but I don't, I don't have that formal letter yet, but we should be able to do that on the fifteenth.
On the fifteenth?
Yeah, so I'll target that and I'll, I'll push people and make sure we have that. So anything else on that?
No, that's it.
Number, item number two, Bethel Health.
Yeah, you know, she gave us, you know, we got all of this, we haven't moved on this at all. You know, you know, me and fees, I, I love revenue. But I think, I think we should really sit down and, you know, formalize this thing and go forward. I've heard it a couple of times. I'm ready to move on it, but I.
Do you have any changes so far?
Not really. They look good to me.
There might be one or two that might go a little higher.
Okay, fine.
I will have her resubmit that. I've been talking to her about that.
All right.
All right, have, so she can provide it next week?
Yes.
All right, we can move forward on it.
Yes. Okay, item number three, highway equipment storage.
Yeah, you know, my favorite thing is that, that road grader. I mean, we, we got a little bit, one of our constituents came up to us at the last town meeting, to get rid of that town grader there. You know, and, and this bothers me, because I remember the old road grader sat for four years behind, you know, Stony Hill.
Boy, that was one of the engine.
But it started and they, they loaded it.
Did they really?
Yes, they did. It was really, you know, all they did is put some duct tape on the, and loaded it with ether, and it started and they loaded the thing.
They duct taped the engine?
No, they duct taped the gas line.
That's, you can fix anything with duct tape.
But, you know, my, my point is, we invested in this thing, and it always was in the storage area. I can, we, we just can't be leaving town equipment around for people to complain to us.
Okay, well, you, you know, it was moved down to the barn at the, at Park and Rec. You knew that, right?
No.
It, it's, it's, it's down there now.
Oh, okay. There were some other.
Well, it's in a more secure location, so that's one good thing.
Yeah. Does that thing fit in the, in the garage?
Yes, it was in there.
It was.
I remember, it was the far end.
The, the far end where it can go across, okay.
Yeah.
Well, if the worst came to worst, they could put it in the salt shed, as long as there's no salt.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, okay, so.
But it's.
Yeah, you know, we've got, we just can't be leaving equip, equipment around.
Yeah. Okay, point taken.
Okay.
Then number four?
Number four. I took a, a ride when I was at the recycling center the other day, and right behind the, the shed where we store all of these salt spreaders, the equipment, there's so much steel back there, you know, and I'm saying to myself, you know, we're never gonna use it. And there's a good price for steel today, you know, we can just load it on a highway.